Jessica, you all right, ready?
Go for it.
All right. I will call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for December 20th, 2016. Is there anybody here to speak to anything that's not on tonight's agenda? All right, moving right along to the Planning Board meeting minutes for November 15th, 2016. Everybody have a chance to look them over? Any errors or omissions? No?
Motion to adjourn the minutes from November 15th.
I'll second that.
Call in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Abstentions? Libby is abstaining.
I also have a Mullins' oral affidavit. That's what it's called.
Oh.
Because I wasn't at the last hearing.
Exactly. Excellent. All right, do you want me to hold on to this?
I'd like to put it in the file if we keep it all together.
I'll just tell it that way.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Libby. All right. Onto old business, Cumberland Farms, 221 North Hampton Street. So, you want to come up?
Ready, Tom?
You want to go to the podium? Yeah, podium would be great.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Thomas Murphy. I'm a partner with the firm of Murphy McCubrey and One Monarch Place in Springfield, and I'm here tonight representing Cumberland Farms. I actually am here primarily to introduce two of our consultants who will advise you of the technicalities of this project, but I'm here also representing Mr. Ross Galloway, who's with First Hartford Development, which is the developer of this particular site. And I'm here with Luke DiStefano from Bowler Engineering and Erin Fridette from McMahon Transportation and Consulting for the traffic study. So, I think it's best for me to introduce Mr. Luke DiStefano, who will make his presentation.
Great.
Good evening, members of the board. And for the record, Luke DiStefano with Bowler Engineering. I believe all, if not most, of the board was at the previous meeting when we had outlined in detail exactly what it is Cumberland Farms is proposing at this particular location here in the city of East Hampton. During that meeting, there were a handful of questions raised about the development itself, about some of the things we were doing with lighting, stormwater management, landscaping, traffic, et cetera. I believe before the meeting was concluded, however, it was determined that there were still outstanding questions that the board wanted to see some resolution to, as well as outstanding comments from the towns, peer reviewing Dusetten Associates, as well as a comment letter outstanding from Mass DEP, which wasn't specifically related to this board, but the Conservation Commission. Since that time, we have gone through, and our office has compiled, along with McMahon Associates and Cumberland Farms, we've compiled responses to all of the comments included in both the Mass DEP letter, as well as the Dusetten Associates letter. New information was provided to the Conservation and was discussed at a meeting earlier this month, and new information was also submitted to this board, I believe, a little over a week ago, which included the comment response letters, some revised plans, revised calculations, and ultimately a modified traffic study to address, again, those comments raised. At this point, because again, I know we had gone through and did a detailed presentation the first time, I'm more than happy to answer any questions the board has. I can go through the comment letters, item by item, and discuss our responses, or I'm happy to go back and do another presentation of the project as if we were starting from scratch, but I figured I would leave that up to the board and what you guys saw fit.
Overview again, or are we good with?
The line item, good for me.
Yeah, just go through the comment letter. I think that makes sense. We use the comment letter as a guideline, sort of have you go through.
So, we'll start. This is the Dusetten letter, and I believe there's a representative from Dusetten here. And basically, the first comment was, or the first series of comments dealt specifically with the site plan, or the special permit application in general. The first comment was that it was recommended that the applicant provide information related to water/wastewater consumption and generation and documentation from water and sewer departments that the municipal facilities can accommodate additional demand. We spoke with Cumberland Farms. We actually got empirical data from a handful of different locations, similar in size. And basically, a facility of this size is a pretty low volume generator. It's about 500 gallons a day. And based on conversations we've had with city staff, we are unaware of any capacity issues or issues handling that amount of flow with the current infrastructure. Second comment, I'll ultimately defer to McMahon, as it revolved around the traffic impact statement. We can come back to that. The third comment dealt with elevation plans for the exterior side of the building. We had noted that we would provide color renderings of the project. I have one on the board to my left and another behind it, which basically outlines and details the color scheme and the look of the proposed Cumberland Farms. If you've had the opportunity to see any of the recently constructed Cumberland Farms in the area, I know there's one in West Springfield, one in Westfield, there's one in Agwam, and there are a handful of these around the area. This will be the exact same look and appearance as those locations, so this is no real deviation from their prototypical look, if you will. The next series of comments dealt with additional, or specific to land use regulations. And the first comment dealt with electronic message boards on the pylon sign. Based on conversations we had with the building inspector, Mr. Flag, I was determined that EMCs or electronic message centers within the high-risk business zone are prohibited and would ultimately require variance relief from the zoning board of appeals. At this point, I don't know if Cumberland Farms has made a decision relative to whether or not they would seek variance relief for that sign. So, for the purposes of tonight and the site plan or special permit, we would basically ask that that message center not be included in the signed package if we ultimately decide we're going to get variance relief or seek variance relief. We'll do that under a special, separate application to the zoning board of appeals. Next, a comment dealt with the minimum number of spaces and the total number of spaces provided on the property. I believe zoning requires a minimum number of spaces for a use of this size to be 24, and Cumberland Farms is proposing 35. And the comment raised by Dusetten basically revolved around why Cumberland Farms felt the need to have the 11 additional parking spaces on the property. That's a direct result of Cumberland Farms owning and operating, I forget, somewhere in the order of magnitude of 800 of these types of facilities, generally with a store of this size on a roadway with the traffic volumes on North, similar to North Hampton Street, the number of pumps, et cetera. 35 spots, they feel, is a good number. It'll handle, obviously, the daily traffic to the property, but it'll also handle those odd days and odd situations where you're going to see some additional peak parking on these properties. We live in New England. Generally, you don't see a lot of this size, almost two acres, relatively flat and basically square, so we don't typically see that amount of parking at gas stations, but it's not because they don't want it, it's because they typically can't fit it on the property. Here, Cumberland Farms has the opportunity to do that, and they felt that the 35 spaces proposed is a good number for the use being considered on the lot.
And the 35 doesn't include the spots at the pumps, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, and that, there's another 12?
Correct. The next series of comments dealt specifically with stormwater management. The first comment dealt with an emergency spillway elevation and an inconsistency between that on the grading plan and some details. We've since modified the details so that the spillway elevations are consistently shown at an elevation of 182. That was just an oversight on the plans. The second comment deals with a Mass DEP issue relative to infiltration basins, and that infiltration basin shall not be placed over fill materials. And it's a little technical, but basically, what has happened is since the initial comment has come in, we have no longer designed, or we no longer take credit for infiltration with this base, and we've gone back and we've remodeled it. Even though we still will get infiltration, none of our calculations take that infiltration into effect. So, we are still able to provide all of the requisite recharge volume, as well as reducing runoff rates from the property, which were required to do under the regulations, without ultimately needing any of that infiltration. So, we basically added in a factor of safety, if you will, on the design.
Okay, and that's a little hyper-technical. Can you explain the difference between infiltration and detention, and also, like, what practically speaking, it means in this case, what the two plans, how they differ?
Well, basically, retention or infiltration is basically where you allow stormwater runoff from the site to simply recharge back into the groundwater, or to percolate back into the soil, and ultimately into the groundwater below. A detention system in its truest form is basically a big bucket. You're taking stormwater, you're putting it into a bucket, you're not allowing it to infiltrate, but you're letting it go off the property at a slower rate than what it does under existing conditions, which is ultimately what we're required to do. And there's a whole host of ways you can do that. It's typically through outlet control structures and different size holes in these structures, which will allow water to run off either at quicker rates or slower rates. And then there's programs that we plug all the information to. They run some fancy calculations, and they spit out numbers at the end, and basically, you look at what the runoff rates are under the existing condition, typically for the two, 10, 25, and 100-year storm events. Then you remodel the site under the proposed condition, and you basically make sure that the post-developed condition is less than what the pre, or what the existing condition is. So, if this site is generating 10 cubic feet of runoff under the existing condition, we want to be less than that under the proposed. And that's outlined in the drainage report that we have provided.
So, the infiltration system, it's basically holding the water, but it doesn't keep it in there. It'd be absorbed by the groundwater, by the ground naturally, right? And the detention, it's a little more directed, sort of piping kind of system? Is that right? Is that roughly what it is?
Pretty much.
So, what was the, so the original plan here was an infiltration basin, right? And now it's qualified as a detention basin, although I guess what you were saying before is there's still going to be sort of natural infiltration anyway?
Right.
You're just not taking, it doesn't count it, but that's what's going to happen in the structure?
Correct. It's still going to function as it originally did. You're still going to see infiltration through the bottom and the sides of the basin, but we wanted to show that even based on the soil conditions that were identified, that if we just took all of that out and said, "We're not going to take any credit for infiltration" based on some of the other features of the drainage basin, the overfill, the drawdown device, we have some other features that we've installed that are mentioned in some of the following comments, that will allow this system to function as it's required without taking credit for the infiltration. So, as I mentioned, we've basically built in a factor of safety and don't need to really worry about the soil infiltration there.
So, you're detaining water. Are mosquitoes an issue?
No, it'll draw down. Typically, they're required to draw down over 72 hours, so you're not going to see standing water. There may be instances where you have back-to-back storms, and there's water in there longer than you'll typically see, but for something like this, it's going to be a dry basin.
And what's the process for sort of maintaining or cleaning the system?
We have a long-term operation and maintenance plan that we've included in the drainage report. And basically, what it consists of is semi-annual inspections of all of the physical structures on the site, the catch basins, the stormwater quality unit, the basin itself. Effectively, Cumberland Farms is going out there on a regular basis and just making sure that the components of this stormwater management system are functioning the way they were intended to function.
Do you want a hard copy of the drainage report so that you have a copy of the O&M plan in front of you, or?
I, I have a hard copy of it.
Okay.
I mean, some of it, just to clarify, we have a lot of this information, but some of it is getting it out to everyone else, right? So, we may ask a question that we know the answer to, but not to drag you through it again.
The next comment, comment three, and again, this one's a little technical, but I'll just read. Volume two, chapter two, design criteria for infiltration basins includes a minimum of separation from seasonal high groundwater of at least two feet and a design exfiltration time of no less than 72 hours. The applicant has submitted subsurface information in the form of two boring logs and results of three test pits in the vicinity of the infiltration basin. Based on our initial review of the submitted information, some of the data suggests that the basin bottom may be close to the seasonal high groundwater. It is recommended that the applicant provide additional commentary on the direct correlation between subsurface results for test pit two and DR two, as well as the groundwater elevation findings in DR one, to clearly demonstrate performance with the groundwater separation requirement. That's the comment. And again, the answer, if the representative from Dusetten wants to elaborate, basically, again, we're no longer taking credit for infiltration, so in our opinion, that comment no longer applies. The direct separation from groundwater is no longer an issue.
I think he also raised the bottom of the basin.
Pardon me?
Did you raise the bottom of the basin?
We did not. The next comment dealt with the need for a potential drainage easement. I know there's been some concern about runoff from the property. As I mentioned during the Conservation Commission hearing, Cumberland Farms is in the process of working through that drainage easement with the property owner. The exact language of that will be ironed out between, I'm guessing, some legal entities, and what we've ultimately asked is that that be something, that be a condition either of the, we would like it to be a condition of a certificate of occupancy, should we get to that point, that this easement has to be drafted and reviewed and approved by whatever town staff.
As opposed to the building permit?
Building permit's okay, too. Either one, basically, Cumberland Farms would be proceeding somewhat at their own risk, but if it's, has to be issued or ironed out prior to the building permit, that's Comment five, I had asked for a monitoring well within the drainage basin. We have added one. It's now shown on the plans. Comment number six dealt with the need for an access drive, if you will, of 15 feet around the basin for cleaning and maintenance. We've added that, however, we've added it at eight feet wide, as opposed to 15. I think a 15-foot-wide access aisle around a basin of this size is unnecessary. The type of equipment that you're going to need to maintain this basin is most likely nothing more than a lawnmower, but in some instances, you may need something like a Bobcat to get in there and potentially clean out some of the sediment. So, we feel that the eight-foot-wide access aisle around the basin is more than adequate for maintenance purposes. Next comment, number seven, dealt with the need for a drawdown device within the basin. We have now shown a drawdown device and added that to the basin details. Number eight, again, this one is a little tricky, a little technical. It deals with basically an impervious core detail that we show.
I'm sorry, is it all right? Before you jump off of the basin, real quick, the fencing in it, can you reiterate?
Pardon me?
The fencing around it?
Correct.
What is it exactly?
We show it as a four-foot-high fence. Usually, it's just a chain link fence. One of the comments does ask for a six-foot-high fence. Again, Cumberland Farms is okay with either. Typically, a four-foot fence is more than adequate, but we'll leave that up to whatever the pleasure of the board is, I guess.
That largely could be a specified preference. It's something that we specified this early. It's, it's, and consideration.
Okay. Comment eight, it deals, again, with an impervious core detail that is shown on the plans. Again, it's a little technical, and what I will say is, to respond to that, we've modified some of the details, and we've added some additional information to the plans as far as soil erosion and sediment control, because ultimately, the concern is that this type of detail or this type of material that we're proposing has a high erosion rate. So, we've doubled up what we have for soil erosion and sediment control barriers on that side of the property to rectify that situation. Comment number nine, erosion and sediment control plan, and deals, and mentions the need for a SWIP. We've identified that a copy of the stormwater pollution prevention plan will be submitted to both the Planning Board and Conservation Commission at least two weeks prior to the start of construction at this location. Comment 10 deals with the need for a mounding analysis. Again, going back, because we've redesigned this, and our design only utilizes detention, our response is that the mounding analysis is necessarily necessary. Comment number 11 talks about the four-foot-high chain link fence around the stormwater basin. We, as I mentioned, our response is that refilled. The six-foot-high fence is unnecessary, but we'll leave that up to the discretion of the board. And then the remaining comments basically dealt with some of the relief, some of the waivers being requested by the planning, or from the planning board. The first dealt with signage, and it looks like Dusetten had no comment on the signed waiver request. The second dealt with large parking areas, be subdivided with islands so that no paved parking surface shall exceed more than 80 feet in width. The note here is that our response is that the nature of the proposed use requires parking spaces to be located adjacent to the building to provide for quick, safe access between the store, parking, and fueling areas. Since the building width, 104 feet, exceeds 80 feet, it's not practical to meet this requirement of the section without impeding parking or pedestrian access to the building. Maintenance of landscaping would also be difficult in this area due to high-foot traffic. In lieu of this requirement, extensive plantings will be provided along the site frontage and sidelines of the property. And the comment, or the response from Dusetten was, "The applicant's response is not unreasonable given the site layout and functionality of the proposed use." And then the last one deals with access to and from the property, and there is a concern or a comment raised relative to why we feel the need to have two full-movement curb cuts versus an enter-only and an exit-only. And I'll again defer to Erin, our traffic consultant. She can speak to that in more detail. Once I conclude here. And then the next one dealt, again, with landscaping and screening standards. A landscape strip of at least 15 feet continuous except for approved driveways shall be established adjacent to any public road to visually separate parking and other uses from the road. The buffer strips shall be planted with grass, medium-high shrubs, shade trees, minimum two-inch caliper planted at least every 50 feet along the road frontage. At all street or driveway intersections, trees or shrubs shall be set back a sufficient distance from such intersections so that they do not present a traffic visibility hazard. The sidewalk required in Section 10.514(c)(1) shall be incorporated into the buffer strip. We had basically requested a waiver to take those six street trees, which would ultimately be required, right along the frontage of the property, and they would, in our opinion, significantly impact visibility to the property. We're just asking that we can plant the six trees, four here and two here. So, we're still providing the same amount of trees, we're just asking that they be located a little bit differently on the property. This is a gas station. It is a primarily pass-by trip location where visibility to the site and to the signage and pricing is more critical to this than it may be for other type of retail uses. So, that's why we feel not having the trees right along the property line and along the sidelines is a reasonable, I guess, meet-in-the-middle solution to that particular requirement. And then there were just, I believe it was, two general comments, one dealt with snow removal. We basically show proposed snow storage areas on the site plan. We haven't located them near the driveways, so the snow storage will ultimately not impact parking or site visibility around or into or out of the property. And ultimately, what ends up happening in facilities like this, if snow storage does become an issue, it will be no different than pretty much every other Cumberland Farms here in New England. They'll truck the snow off the property and dispose of it properly. They don't want the snow impacting customers' ability to get in and around the property anymore than anyone else does. So, we have what we feel are adequate areas for snow storage should we need it, but in the event, you know, we get some storms like we had a few years ago, we certainly can take it off-site and dispose of it properly. And then the last one, I think, just deals really with, should the plan be, or should the application be approved, that it be approved with some conditions? I think this is more of a policy comment, and we will provide whatever plans need to be ultimately endorsed by the board, should we get to that point.
Is there somebody from Dusetten here? Could we ask you some questions? Do you mind jumping up? I think it makes sense to stick on the stormwater thing for now, since we've kind of jumped in already.
I'm Tom Hogan, registered professional civil engineer with Dusetten Associates of East Hampton, Mass. My firm was engaged by the East Hampton Department of Public Works to perform a peer review of the application materials from a technical perspective, stormwater utilities layout. And to aid us with the traffic elements of the review, we worked with Venoson Associates, who provided the review of the McMahon report. And the way it all went together was, we performed an initial review, issued a letter dated November 15th with comments, observations. The idea was to try to create a platform for some enhanced communication regarding the application and the board, and, you know, to see how the project is going to meet the standards of the town. So, you'll see in our review letters, much of what we do is just kind of go down in checklist fashion of some of your requirements. Some of those requirements, many are engineering-related, some of them are not landscape issues, or kind of more of a planning issue for the board. But we do offer the advice where we feel, from an engineering perspective, it's suitable. Bowler Engineering issued a letter of responses, and we issued a response to their responses. I would say, in our opinion in general, that the application package, the plans were clear, concise, well-done. I think the remaining comments that we have now are just minor in nature, but I'll try to answer any questions.
Sure. I guess first, I'm curious just to ask your opinion about this sort of conversion that I was asking about before, of sort of going from an infiltration basin to a detention basin, and sort of whether that kind of alleviates the concerns that Dusetten had with the original plan?
Yeah. And let me explain. The obligation of the applicant is to manage their stormwater in accordance with Massachusetts' DEP, Stormwater Management Standards, as well as your local home rule. In order to do that, they, the standards include no new discharges of untreated water. They have to balance their pre-and post drainage rates as they leave the site. They have to provide recharge to an amount prescribed by the scientific data that helps us try and replenish groundwater resources. It also talks about operation and maintenance, and just a host of ways to deal with lands of higher potential polluting loading. The issue that we had gotten into was kind of two issues. One was the performance of the infiltration basin, which is a system designed One was the performance of the infiltration basin, which is a system designed to provide treatment through the bottom of the basin with excess flows going to the analysis point, if you will. So, it uses treatment, which the applicant is doing by implementing deep-sump catch basins and a proprietary stormwater treatment device, as well as treatment in the basin itself. It would provide stormwater quality treatment as well as the mitigation of peak flows. Once we had discussed and were able to, you know, look closely at the groundwater elevation, some of the other analysis that may have been required, the designers took, I would say, a slight change in the way they viewed their strategy of managing the stormwater. So, instead of an infiltration basin, they're calling it a detention basin for the purposes of managing or meeting their obligation for balancing pre- and post-stormwater flow rates. No credit for the amount of water that goes into the ground from a peak-flow rate perspective. However, the water that goes in the ground still meets their recharge requirement because it's treated upstream. So, in my opinion, it's, it's okay to handle their stormwater.
So, just to clarify the board, so when the water's collected, it's going into a storm scepter, which is, it's gonna, that's gonna clean the water before it gets to the detention basin?
Yeah, and that's after it goes through catch basins as well.
Right.
Then it goes to this basin and they have a spreadsheet that talks about the treatment train, their obligations for the eighty percent TSS. So, in my opinion, those elements would be consistent with the system that meets.
And when it gets discharged, I mean, it's collecting water from a pretty large area, right? And it sometimes ends up funneling it out. I mean, is there some sort of way where it alleviates that so it's not just funneling it out in a, in a large volume or?
I think they have a level spreader idea where the idea is to trickle it over a longer area as opposed to a point discharge. I mean, it still goes to where it goes today, generally speaking. But that's consistent with managing the discharge, in our opinion.
Anybody else have any questions or I can keep going?
Let her.
I'm curious your thoughts about the access lane, the eight-foot versus the fifteen-foot and whether you think that's reasonable or whether there's scenarios where it may be beneficial to have the wider access lane around the basin or what you think?
My opinion is fifteen feet is a lot. I could see that being more appropriate on a basin that a municipality may end up owning, for instance, with a residential subdivision. Engineering stuff, no, is correct. Cumberland Farms has the obligation to make sure that the system is up-kept, that it's stable, that it's moed, that it's performing in accordance with the long-term obligations that it has through its permit with this board as well as the conservation commission. So, I'm sure that they've evaluated closely their ability to meet those obligations. Eight feet is probably, if they're willing to go down with some, you know, more smaller equipment, it might be more labor-intensive, but if they think that can meet their obligations, I don't, I don't think that's unreasonable.
So, that's something where it's more going to be a matter of ease for them maintaining it? So, they're not quite the same concern you might have where the town might end up needing to use it and then they look around and realize it's not big enough for their equipment?
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
And like I said, they have this long-term obligation, I'm sure that's done.
And how about with the fencing? Do you have thoughts about the four versus the six-foot fencing? It sounds like it's not, it shouldn't be containing large quantities of water. Hopefully, there won't be an issue with safety or things like that, that there might be if it was several feet of water, but here's what you think.
And I don't disagree one way or the other. I think it's a designer's preference. I've gotten, as a designer, into the habit of using six-foot fence just to eliminate that question of safety, but the designer's correct, the idea is that, or if designed properly and care has been taken, that this pond would only see water for seventy-two hours at a time on an entry point basis.
Just to be absolutely clear, we're talking about an open body of water at some depth. What would that depth be?
I think it's a foot.
One foot.
I'm sorry, let me take that back. It's a foot below the bottom, invert out. Right after certain storms, the basin could be up to three feet in depth until the water slowly goes out the outlet device.
Any other stormwater questions?
No.
Erin? Move on to another topic?
How about traffic?
Talk about that guy, I'm sorry.
Okay, another question. Thank you, Mr. Hogan.
Next time.
Yeah, the question that I have is, what happens if, now it's far-fetched, but what happened if this Cumberland Farms wasn't profitable and you guys decided just to, just to take off and East Hampton would be stuck with a empty gas station? You got an answer for that?
I'd be ultimately...
I know it's highly unlikely, but...
Cumberland Farms wants to be here for a long time. You know, I don't have a crystal ball any more than you guys do, so you're asking me to answer a question I simply can't answer. I mean, it would be like any other property. Legally, there'd be some obligation to maintain the site, but to what level? Not my area of expertise by any means.
Well, I guess maybe a follow-up question is, this is a property that's going to have underground storage tanks and that poses a different situation than just a building. That's a building on a vacant piece of land, so maybe there's enlightenment on how Cumberland Farms deals with decommissioning when it comes to the decommissioning of the underground tanks, because I think that's the biggest environmental concern.
And if you could just start explaining to everybody here what kind of storage there is going to be on-site under the current plan?
Similar to other Cumberland Farms in the area, they're proposing two twenty-thousand-gallon underground storage tanks. These are state-of-the-art, double-wall fiberglass brine-filled tanks that have all the bells and whistles needed as required by the federal government, the state of Massachusetts, and your local fire department. And I can, if you want, I've been designing and permitting gas stations for twenty-three years, I can give you the forty-five-minute version of all the safety devices on that fueling system, or I can tell you, the system that's being proposed will meet and exceed all of the federal, state, and local regulations. But basically, should the tanks be taken out of service, I believe, and it's been a while since I've had to deal with this, I believe it's two years, that they can remain in the ground unused. At that point, they're considered abandoned and they have to be taken out of the ground. So, should the site close, my understanding is that after two years, if the tanks have not been used, they have to be taken out of service, which ultimately means they have to be taken out of the ground or, I believe there also are some ways you can render the tanks inert by getting in there and cleaning them out and filling them with a certain type of solution. It's usually a slurry mix, but...
And that responsibility is on the landowner?
Correct.
And if they don't?
This is where the performance guarantee comes in.
Yeah. You have a follow-up question here or you...
No, that's fine.
Okay. Anybody want to move on to traffic at this point or?
If you like.
All right.
I'd say, oh.
Sure.
I would say when Cumberland Farms closes a store, almost, they have a lot of the older facilities that are put on the market to sell. Every facility, the tanks are removed, as well as the pump aisles, and it's actually stated that they cannot do gas on that site forever, you know, for the rest. That's how most of the old gas stations are transferring right now.
Yeah, okay. All right. Yeah, if we could go through the traffic stuff, that'd be great.
Again, for the record, Erin Fergat with McMahon Associates. So, I'll pick up where Luke left off, I think, leading off with the access, the two proposed driveways, the two proposed full-access driveways, which is either one driveway or two one-way driveways, one entering and one exiting. The first reason we really need the two full-access driveways is for fuel tanker circulations and those fuel deliveries. Consolidating it to one driveway makes it very difficult for the, if not impossible, for the fuel tanker to come around, load those tanks up, and leave again. Even with a one-way in, one-way out, it really restricts the ability for the fuel tanker to be able to come around if it were conventional, you know, the first driveway you would come to is an entrance-only and the second being an exit-only.
Excellent. Sure. We never see this.
Thank you.
And so, what the two full-access driveways are, is a really clean full circulation around the site, which just helps keeping the site from, you know, any reversing of the fuel tanker or things like that. The second reason we look for the two full-access drives is for efficiency of patrons entering and exiting. When everything's consolidated to one point, say one exiting, exiting movement, all the vehicles that want to get out would have to queue in one spot. And when there's queuing on-site, it can start to interfere with the pumps or the parking and there is always potential for that to start to spill onto Route ten, which we definitely don't want from a safety perspective. And so, having the two entrance and exit points allow for more efficient stacking of vehicles exiting a site, as well as the ability for vehicles from two positions to be able to accept the gas on Route ten. So, if there's a hole in traffic, instead of just one car being able to get out, two cars can get out simultaneously. And the way that the driveways are designed, there's about one hundred and twenty-five feet between the two, which is sufficient to, sufficient space to allow two entering, two exiting vehicles to be able to see each other and do so safely. Yeah, so, it's really, the circulation is key. And last off, this is a Massa roadway. They will need to issue an access permit to us in order for us to build this property and so, they'll, they'll need to sign off on the presence of the two full-access driveways. And we have reached out them, reached out to them to take a look at what we're proposing and based on their preliminary review, they were on board with the two full-access driveways. So, moving on to the other traffic comments, I'll go through the Vinas letter item by item and if there are any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer those. So, starting off with comment one, they asked that we expand our study area to look at the two intersections to the north, the intersection of Route ten with Lyman Street, which is unsignaled, and the intersection of O'Neill Street, which is signaledized. Earlier this month, right after we got that comment letter, we went out and we did additional traffic counts at the two of those locations and included that in our revised study, which was submitted earlier this month. The second comment spoke to collecting ATR data, which is automatic traffic recorder. That collects daily traffic volumes as well as speeds on the roadway. We also did that. We did it from a Thursday through to Saturday to capture both a Thursday and a Saturday. And the reason they wanted us to do that was to make sure we were looking at the right time periods, that there wasn't a peak at, say, two o'clock when school got out and we weren't analyzing the right time period. So, we took that data, we collected that data and found out that the peak periods we originally looked at, the AM and the PM, were indeed the actual highest during that weekday, weekday day. They also asked, looking to comment three, they asked that we look at Saturday data because of how this type of facility generates. They suggested that it would also be a peak time for the site and laws adjacent street traffic. And ultimately, we found it to be kind of in-between the weekday morning peak hour and the weekday afternoon peak hour. So, again, we included that for not just the site driveways, but also Lyman Street and O'Neill Street. So, the revised study kind of has that full, that full picture of the site driveways and the two new intersections. Moving on to comment four, and some of these will get repetitive, so I'll probably skip over them, but they call to the ATR data to look at vehicle speeds on the roadway. And what we found is that the eighty-fifth percentile speed, which is generally what's used in our site distance calculation, things like that, we found that to be about thirty-eight miles per hour in each direction, which is actually considerably lower than the posted forty-five. I'm usually having to defend vehicle speeds that are much higher, so I was actually happy to see that. And that'll come into play later when we talk about the safety of the driveways, because we looked at it assuming vehicle speeds of forty-five miles per hour. So, we found that they were, they were able to safely operate at those speeds, so at lower speeds, that just increases that margin of safety even more.
Can I ask a real quick question here? At the beginning of this Vinas letter, one of the issues that they talked about is the daily traffic generation projection and how that, the total number, I don't think is provided anywhere, or maybe I missed it where it is, but do you have that information? Is that something, it sounds like some of that is whether it crosses thresholds for various other reporting and that kind of stuff, but...
Sure, and we're currently working with both Massa and MIPA to identify what the appropriate filing is. I really, you're referring to the MEPO filing and whether we'd be an EMF or an EIR, and we're working with them right now to identify what that filing is, but we will have to go through that process, which will result in the daily number that, that Vinas noted.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. But they won't let us get away with no filing, I'm sure, so. Moving on to comment five, they asked that we look at some more crash, some more years' worth of crash data. So, we did that in the vicinity of our proposed driveways as well as the two adjacent intersections and the findings of that is that the signaledized intersection had a crash rate that was just about, on average, with the statewide average crash rate for signaledized intersections and it was, it was pretty well below the district crash rate for signaledized intersections. Lyman Street was well below both the state and the district averages and the two driveways didn't have any crashes reported over that five-year period. They, and comment six, they asked that we talk to North Hampton, since they're so close by, about other potential developments that might be coming down the pipeline and include those in our future traffic analysis. We reached out to them and they noted that there were none, that they expected to impact traffic in this area. We still included a one percent background growth rate from our existing 2016 traffic counts out to 2023, which is, depending on who you talk to, is in-line or sometimes a little conservative in the area. We have been seeing some traffic volumes decrease over the last four or five years and so, that one percent kind of captures anything that might come down the pipeline in a year that we don't, we don't know about right now. So, it gives us the ability to have that conservative amount, future, future year analysis.
So, when you say conservative, it's conservative, meaning it may be overly optimistic for generating more traffic or overly pessimistic? It may produce more trips, more cars than, than maybe is likely, but not, the reference to the no-build condition trap, that's assuming that everything stays flatline, right? Nothing gets added, as-is?
So, the no-build is nothing gets added from the project. So, the no-build includes all of the existing traffic as well as that one percent annual growth rate for the next seven years.
Okay.
And we say, we call it conservative because, you know, we, we don't know that traffic volumes will just grow. They did for a very long time, but now, I would say over the last ten years, it's, it's started to level off quite significantly in comparison to the last two or three decades. So, that's why I note that it's potentially conservative. Comment seven talks about including Saturday. We did so based on how, what I said earlier, that the adjacent street traffic and the expected onsite traffic kind of are in-between that AM peak hour and PM peak hour. Comment eight was in regards to the amount of pass-by. They agreed with our methodology, so no action required there. Comment nine is regarding the MEPO filing. We'll be, we'll be, or we are currently coordinating with them to make sure that we have the appropriate filing to move forward with that process. The comment ten notes depicting the proposed traffic volumes, both new and pass-by, those are provided in the appendix of the revised, revised traffic study. Comment eleven was about adding the additional locations. Did that. Comment twelve is in regards to how we calculated our site distance. And so, this is the ability of vehicles both entering and exiting the site to see each other on the roadway in order to avoid collisions and have that safe, safe access. We conducted our analysis using the forty-five miles per hour, so the fact that the eighty-fifth percentile speed came... speed came in lower than that means that the analysis we completed was, again, conservative and, and has that, has an increased margin of safety because of that lower speed on the roadway. Comment 13 is broken out into a few different comments. I think they mostly refer to the, the site plan. The first one talks about fuel deliveries occurring outside of peak hours. Cumberland Farms operates their, their fuel delivery, so they're able to control when those deliveries can happen. Similarly with the, with the second item, they recommend that trash pickup happen outside of peak hours and that the parking spaces in front of the traction closure be free when that happens. Those are proposed to be employee parking spaces, and so they'll be familiar when those, with when those trash pickups will happen, and will be sure that it's clear of parked cars when the trash pickup occurs. And I think to the extent possible, we'll try to have that occur during off-peak hours.
Can you just show on the plane up there where the dumpsters are located? Is there to the left of that?
And so you can see the two parking spaces here.
Yeah. Okay.
Let's see, the, sorry, just want to make sure I don't skip any. The third is about placing the driveways under stop control. The revised site plan shows the painted stop bars and the, the stop signs. The fourth com, fourth, comment 13 talks about proposed vegetation and keeping it out of the sightlines. So those sightlines I discussed, making sure that those are free of any obstruction so that vehicles can continue to see each other. Comment five is that all proposed wheelchair ramps or crosswalks should be ADA compliant. Those are within DOT right-of-way, so they'll, they'll also enforce that compliance. And the sixth has to do with a bicycle ramp onsite. Luke, I'm not sure if you know if there, there's one.
We'll add one.
We'll add one.
Okay.
So I think that gets me through all of the specific Vanas comments.
Thank you. I know that you mentioned that you looked at the crash rate on Lyman Street and it was very low, and I know that for Lyman Street can be a bit of an adventure. How is this going to impact, what were the, can you summarize what the results of your Lyman Street study were?
Sure. So at Lyman Street, and really at the other signalized intersection, we, we conducted our full capacity analysis. When we go from that existing to that future no-build condition with that background growth rate that I, I mentioned earlier, we do see a decrease in the level, what we call the level of service from, during that weekday afternoon peak hour, from a level of service E to a level of service F, which is above 50 seconds of delay. So as you talked about it being an adventure, maybe somebody has to wait for a minute or so before they're able to actually get out onto the roadway. Now that is without the proposed project in place. That's just with that general background growth that I spoke about. When we add the proposed project in place, we're primarily adding trips onto North Hampton Street. And because of the pass-by nature of Cumberland Farms, that number of new trips is relatively low. It comes down to about one trip every, one additional trip every two minutes or so, which on a road like North Hampton Street, probably not, not perceptible. We also do add a few trips onto Lyman Street. I think it's about 10%, so it comes down to maybe three additional trips over the whole peak hour. And so in terms of the impact from the no-build condition without the project to, with the project, it is relatively small. The increase in delay is not so significant that the average person would notice it, notice a significant change over that, over that no-build condition. That said, our analysis at that intersection is also conservative because it doesn't take fully into account the presence of the signal just to the north, which should be kind of metering traffic at times, creating additional gaps for that traffic to be able to exit. And so overall, it's shown to operate poorly, but a lot of that has to just do with the general traffic growth as opposed to the few additional trips that are generated by the proposed project.
What about complexity? Not only do you now have to worry about people coming north of the south, but you've got people pulling in and pulling out on the other side, does that factor in to the Lyman Street specifically?
Sure. It does to an extent. We're, we're located far enough south of that Lyman Street intersection that I wouldn't, I wouldn't put those two conflict areas in the same vicinity. I would say they're, they're far enough separated that, yeah, the idea of somebody coming out onto Route 10 from the site is, is on Route 10 by the time they get to Lyman Street.
I have a quick question. Can you indicate where the Mass DOT right-of-way begins on this map here?
I believe, I believe it's through here.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I got a question here. I've never heard this before, okay? So bear with me. JP's got a comment down here that I find absolutely beyond belief, okay? He's saying that-
What are you looking at, Harry? What?
Comment six. I just find it hard to believe that we're going to have to call North Hampton to find out what they're planning on Route 10, if we're going to be building stuff on our, in our business district. I just find that unbelievable. Why would you want to contact North Hampton?
It's just because of the proximity to the town line, so it's just the idea that if something were built over the town line in North Hampton, you'd have to use Route 10 to get to it. And so they wanted to make sure that there wasn't anything major happening that would utilize Route 10. It hadn't, it wasn't too, it wasn't that North Hampton would-
We'll put it this way, we built the medical building, we built the bank, and we passed Stop &amp; Shop. And not one word was ever made of contact North Hampton about what they're planning on doing on Route 10.
But it has to do with the traffic that would be generated on Route 10. So if there was a project right over the line, you would want to take into account-
You're not, you're not considering Stop &amp; Shop? That's only a half mile down the road from where we're talking right here. Nobody ever said a word about that.
What do you mean?
As far as traffic.
Oh, I don't know why it wasn't done in the past. But if you're trying to look at what the actual traffic flow is on Route 10 and somebody's building a target right on the North-
So in other words, so in other words, somebody's going to put a project into our business district, and then we found out that somebody's going to do something on Route 10, and we wouldn't be able to build it on our pro, in our city?
Well, you still can. It's just taking into account what the traffic would be.
Just making sure our analysis is as accurate as possible.
I just find that unbelievable, okay? From my point of view, for what it's worth.
Do you have any more questions on traffic?
I want to just make sure that I'm understanding your statement correctly, because it sounds accurate to me, but we were talking about sightline from coming in and out, and there was the talk about moving the trees to the sides as opposed to the front. You seem to be corroborating that that is in fact a safer thing for the traffic, and it seems to just make sense. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. Keeping those out of the, even if they're, they're small trees, sometimes when they're in a row like that, you kind of get those, those viewpoints where you're, you're blocking portions of the adjacent roadway.
But if we had, if we were to require trees there, it would still, like, like what if we were to require the trees there? Because that's at, you know, they need a waiver to move them to the sides.
Yeah, I think, I'd have to look at it, but, um, yeah, I, again, I would, I'm certainly much more comfortable with them not being in front of the site.
For safety reasons, essentially.
For safety reasons, yeah. It's just, like I said, even if they're smaller trees, and when you, when they're generated in a line, looking this direction, there's just, there's potential that there's larger sections of the roadway that are just not visible. And if, if it's possible, we'd certainly like to minimize that.
I believe it also says in the documentation that in lieu of trees, that there would be small shrubs that would be placed in the, in the front right-of-way for, you know, so that it's, it's not just all grass.
My concern is about balancing safety with also just some shade on the street, especially for pedestrians. I mean, that's a really long, hot, open stretch of sidewalk in the summer, so as someone who's walked on that stretch, I know it can be pretty miserable in the summer. Yeah.
Oh, Mr. Boer.
Just regarding trees, if you require, if you don't get the waiver, those trees won't survive. The amount of salt the state puts right there on those, those little trees, though, I mean, I know they can be replaced, but they won't grow into mature trees. They might be replaced, but the amount of salt right now, we're having a problem with our properties with the grass. It's just, you know, I've had to put them on in a few spots, re-home spots. The amount of salt that the contractors put on just matches right now.
I just want to say that I've represented Cumberland Farms and a number of other locations, and to my recollection, there's never been a requirement to have trees in the front, which, which we view as a safety issue and could block. Obviously, a bigger concern of ours is the two accesses and the traffic flow and the safety of the people coming in and out. And that, in our opinion, would be a impediment to safety.
I heard the word shrubs.
Right?
So go to the plant that you have, you have a packet of-
Sure. If there's something-
Yes, so that-
Low would be fine.
And how low are we talking?
About three feet.
I was going to say, from a safety perspective, it would-
Have you identified the species in the front? Is it on the planting plan? Looks like, uh-
Is that identified?
Yeah.
Junipers? Looks like junipers.
Yeah, all the heights are identified. Anything that we typically plant along the roadway is going to be below three feet in height or above typically seven, eight feet in height, which is generally the clearance window that DOT likes to see in the property.
And I know that I'm sort of crossing boards here, but I just want to note that the Conservation Commission, in terms of the plants, are going to want to make sure that anything that's near the wetlands is going to probably be native, and I want to just make sure that there's not going to be changed later on.
No.
Okay.
I mean, they had some concern about invasive species existing on the property. Now, if they, we had indicated at the CONCON hearing, if they impose an order on that order and conditions that says those invases have to be mitigated, we'll make sure that that's taken care of.
Okay. A little more traffic question. I know that the entrance and exit is largely governed by the state as well, and that we've got the, there's no left-turn lanes, which I think the state doesn't like, right? But is there, what kind of impact is that going to have on sort of the ingress and egress? I mean, is it wide enough where two cars will be able to pull outside by side, or is it going to be-
On the driveway?
Yeah.
I would say not, not that approaching out of closing traffic.
So you're going to have to wait for somebody making a left turn?
Right. And our, our analysis takes that into account, but that just furthers the, the reasoning behind the, the two driveways, is that, yeah, if there were just one, someone taking a left, everybody would have to be waiting behind that.
It'd be a real bottleneck there, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Do we have anybody from Vanas here? Or can you talk about the traffic at all, or no?
Barely.
Barely, okay. All right. Do you folks have any other questions about the traffic?
Yeah. Well, no, not traffic, sorry.
Jim, you got another question about someone else, then?
Yeah, you know, typically convenience stores generate a lot of trash. People going in, buy candy bar, come out, toss it to the trash can, maybe it goes in, maybe the wind takes it. I have some concerns about keeping the trash on the site and preventing it from getting into the wetlands around the property. So to that end, what kind of landscape maintenance is proposed that will help clean up any trash that might miss the trash cans? Are there any kind of barriers planned or anything that will help prevent the wind from blowing that into sensitive areas?
I mean, there is a guide rail proposed. We do have the site completely enclosed, obviously the six-foot-high curb, which isn't going to collect something if the wind's really blowing. I mean, it is a convenience store. We have to rely a little bit on the operators of these facilities. And again, I'll bring to your attention any number of the newer Cumberland Farms. And Cumberland Farms, I think I mentioned it the last time, is a Massachusetts-based, family-owned business, and they do take pride in maintaining their facilities. Some of that is also the responsibility of the people utilizing the facility. It doesn't matter how good Cumberland Farms is, if everybody who goes to that site decides to throw their trash on the ground, there's a problem. But generally, the number of trash receptacles provided, there's one for every pump out on the fueling area, there's typically a handful of trash receptacles located around the building. And then, you know, they ask that their employees go out and monitor these locations on a regular basis to basically make sure they're clean. Because like anything, Cumberland Farms, they're making a $3, $4 million investment at this location, and they want people to use it. They want it to be well-maintained, clean, well-lit, inviting, so they spend the time and energy to make sure that that's the case.
So it typically is up to the manager on duty or whatever to make sure that somebody polices the area and attends to any large mess or whatever that needs to be taken care of?
Correct. And there's, like any, you know, business, they have levels of management as well. So you have a store manager who manages the direct employees, you have an area manager who may oversee a handful of store managers, then you have a regional manager who oversees those folks. So it's not just one person saying, get out there and take care of it. There's multiple levels, and their job is to make sure the sites look nice.
And I think there was some, changing topics entirely, but the sewer design, I think there was some discussion maybe at the site visit about whether that was going to be changed or something. Can you explain what's going on with the sewer?
Well, right now, there is no direct sewer available to the property within North Hampton Street. I know the property owner directly across North Hampton Street has sanitary sewer on his property, but that portion of the sewer is privately maintained. What Cumberland Farms is proposing to do is basically run over land to the southeast corner of the overall six-and-a-half acre parcel. I believe it's industrial way back there, there's town sewer available. And plenty of fall, plenty of pitch. It requires a little bit more expense than Cumberland Farms part to run a longer sewer line, but it's just a standard gravity sewer line. Right now, my understanding is that they, you know, do not want to try and get into an agreement with a private sewer owner. It's just counterintuitive. Might take too long and probably cost a lot of money.
And there's a tie-in there in that, on the lot, is that right?
My understanding is there was a stub put in by the current property owner, correct.
I'm just looking, there were a couple emails that came out today about the sewer stuff too, that I just want to make sure we address.
Did I know the comments from the city engineer?
Yeah.
So these were forwarded to the applicant team, so you have them?
We've got them.
Okay.
There's nothing in there that's out of the ordinary or objectionable to applicants? One other question I had is that the sidewalk there, or I guess it's the sidewalk onsite that comes back from the street and then crosses through the parking lot, is that right there?
Correct.
What, what is that actually going to look like on the road when you get there? I mean, is that going to be painted? Is it going to be a different material? How's that being distinguished? Yeah, cutting across the-
Just similar to a crosswalk, you would see a street, it'll be white paint and the black asphalt.
Okay.
I have a question about something we haven't really discussed yet.
Dive right in.
The pumps themselves, is there, I didn't, I didn't notice in here spec for the, the pumps themselves. Did I miss it?
What do you mean, a spec? I mean, an elevation?
Yeah, an elevation.
Typically, they're included on the canopy drawing, which should be, I believe, a cheap 12.
Okay. My question is about whether these pumps will have, will be piping music out into the pumping area, or whether they will have those little TV screens with the volume that can't be turned off. It's about noise coming from the pump.
They will have intercoms, they're required to have intercoms by state law, but they most likely will add little video monitors.
There will be music. There does, there is music piped out. I had that, actually, that comment made last night, one of my other public meetings. But it's, it's actually controlled. But it's actually controlled, obviously, in the store. You know, to go to your question earlier, what we can do, because we're coming back, we'll have a operations person here on hand at the next meeting. We can speak to some of your general questions about garbage cleanup and so forth, just the daily operations. We can bring that person in for the next meeting.
Okay, and there, I mean, is there, I guess maybe we can find out from that person or somebody else. I, that's a really good point I hadn't even thought of in part of, sort of restricting the volume somehow.
Yeah, and I'll be honest with you.
I don't know if that can be heard in the street or in the weather.
Yeah, I'll be honest with you, it came up in last night's meeting in the town of Brunswick in New York. One of the board members was actually at one of the other little areas, stores, brand-new store, and they were concerned about the overall sound.
Yeah.
Very loud. And we just, actually just talked about it earlier today, it's actually controlled by the store employees.
Okay.
So whatever's doing outside is probably allowed on the inside, too, so it's a store issue, usually.
And are there policies or anything like that from Cumberland Farms for how that's done, or is that really sort of a manager's description?
It's the managers and the employees, but like I said, I can bring someone in from operations.
Yeah.
It's not unusual for them to attend at least one of the meetings.
Okay. And kinda related to that, I think we talked a little bit last meeting about the lighting, but if you could just go over what kind of lighting on-site there's gonna be, both on the, in the parking lot and on the building, and on the pumps themselves?
Yeah, basically, there's three different types of lighting on the property. You're gonna have the lights that are located up within the overhead canopy, directly above the gasoline pump. You're also gonna have a series of yard lights located around the paved portion of the property. And then you'll have some sopit lighting and some security lighting on the building. All the lighting that's proposed at this location is full cutoff, down light. It's designed to direct light where you want it, which is basically areas where you're gonna have pedestrian or vehicular activity and not onto abutting property. And we did submit a lighting plan as part of our application, and you'll see that from that lighting plan, you get no light trespass onto abutting properties or the North Hampton Street right-of-way. I mean, lighting has come a long way. I mean, you don't have these big, kinda glowing locations like you used to. If you've had an opportunity to see some of these facilities at night, I mean, from afar, they look pretty dim. But when you get to where the fuel pumps are, you get the parking areas, pedestrian areas, they're well-lit because you get light that comes straight down and really doesn't dissipate out because of the full cutoff nature of the fixtures.
What are the proposed hours for this?
Twenty-four.
That's twenty-four hours, right? Okay. And now that I'm looking at the pumps, too, the canopy over the pumps, how does that drain water off of it, and how does that fit into the stormwater system?
It will be collected, just like runoff from the roof via a series of gutters. They run through the canopy columns down underground, and they're ultimately directed into the stormwater management system.
So they go under the parking lot, it's not discharged onto the park?
It will not. On New England, we typically don't daylight, right, at the pumps, because you get freezing, especially in times like this, create some nasty conditions at the pumps. So it'll be all underground.
A question for Jessica, just so I'm clear on the parking requirements. The parking spaces at the pumps, do those count towards the minimum?
That's a good question.
You can get back to me later.
Well, I mean, the only reference we have is the zoning and the parking standards and the zoning, so.
I didn't notice it on my first pasture, but.
Uh, are parking standards only? Um, well, it depends. So an automotive service station has one space for each gas pump plus two for each service bay stall. We have convenience market, which is five for each thousand square feet of gross floor area, a minimum of four. So you would almost have to sort of piece things together a little bit.
Well, you don't count the actual pump location as a parking spot, right?
Well, according to our zoning for off-street parking regulations on an automotive service station, one space for each gas pump. So unclear. Could be, could be at the gas pump itself or a space because you have a gas pump.
Right.
Probably up for interpretation.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
I think in either instance, even if you added it up, I mean, we have, if it's five per thousand square feet of GFA, we got a five thousand square foot building, that's twenty-five for the C-store use. And if it's one per pump, we'd need six additional, it'd be thirty-one, we got thirty-five, not counting spaces at the pump. So even if that condition applied, where we could take credit, we could theoretically add another twelve parking spaces and have forty-seven.
Right. Well, and I think the question, I mean, I don't know why Libby's motivation is, but I mean, I'm seeing extra spots and more stormwater issues and that kinda stuff, so it's sort of one of those rare situations where we're not trying to help find you extra spots, but wonder if maybe you got too many and we can find a way to reduce that area or what, but...
I, I would really, really hold back on that. My experience with working on that street is that East Hampton's parking requirements are absolute minimums. Everything I've built, we've needed more, almost at least twenty-five percent more. You know, and once you build, once you build it, you can't add, really.
Right.
So I wouldn't cut back.
And the, it's stormwater and its proximity to the wetlands as well?
Right.
Yeah.
I just wanna confirm under the lighting plan that there's not gonna be any lighting impact to the wetlands. It doesn't look like from the plan, but there's, light is gonna be staying out of the wetlands to not?
No, no light trespassing to the wetlands.
Folks have other questions? I mean, I think it's worth it to have somebody from operations come back and we can hear that stuff about that.
Do you wanna start putting together a draft list of conditions at this point?
I think it makes sense. I think it'd be good to talk to the applicant about some of them, too, just to make sure that it's something that's gonna work or not, and figure that out. It sounds like they're in the process. Well, first of all, is there anybody else here who didn't speak that has any comments or questions regarding the project, or?
Hi, Dean Hagan, Twenty-Four Highland Avenue. I just, I apologize, was unavailable at your first meeting, but I know in the initial plans, and there was one brief mention of signage, the initial plans, it appeared some of the signage, both in height and square footage exceeded the zoning. And I was wondering if there's been any modification by the applicants, or if there's a, if they're intending to go to the zoning boards of appeal. It was just more of an informational question that I'm asking.
I think based on what they reported at the beginning of the meeting, that that's not part of this application, and they may or may not seek a variance, but if they do, that's before the ZBA.
Right, I knew that would have to go to the ZBA.
Right.
I just didn't know if in the interim there had been any decision made, so I was just gonna ask the applicant.
I mean, there's no decision been made, to my knowledge, but if we do, we'll have to go to the ZBA for that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other comments or questions at this point? Okay. So the first thing that I had been curious about was the drainage easement, which sounds like they're working on that, and I think needs to be the condition that we receive that.
I would ask that you make that for the occupancy permit and the building permit?
Okay.
One of these wires you brought up, the city lawyer has to look at it. We don't wanna bring him in until we think that that's gonna be a possible goal. I don't wanna incur any city expense.
Yeah.
Does it have to go before the city? I mean, it seems.
If you're gonna have a condition, someone's gonna review it.
Well, I mean, my thought is that, I mean, it seems like it's between two private entities. It's between Cumberland Farms and yourself as the property owner, right? So I think all we would, or all I would wanna see, actually, is that it's filed at the registry of deeds, so.
So you're just looking to see that there's an agreement?
That there's an agreement. I don't think that the city's got an interest in this. It's just that I wanna make sure that it's on record and it's, and it runs with the land, so fifteen, twenty years from now, if some, you know, when, yeah, yeah.
And my preference for the building permit is, by the time you're looking for your CO, you've already got the parking lot in place and the drainage system and everything like that, so I'd rather do it before we create the problem for the abutters, but.
No, that's not, that's not an issue.
That's not an issue, okay. I think that makes sense.
Performance guarantee?
Yeah, I was gonna go through some of the easier ones first, but I think that we do need, I mean, I think things like the stormwater plan, I think we're gonna need that recorded.
So, so an annual report to be sent to the city engineer and the health department regarding the operation, the maintenance, the annual?
Semi-annual.
That was, that was the second one, but the first one was the stormwater plan, the SWIP before construction begins.
At least two weeks.
Right? To the CONCOM and us.
At least two weeks before, that's standard.
And then I do think the annual report and detailing the cleaning and maintenance to, well, I think it's like the health department and the DPW, is that typically?
Right, it just wants to make sure that it's swept out and cleaned so that there's not a buildup and a backup of the, of the base.
Isn't that part of the Conservation Commission order of conditions?
It is, but.
Is there a permit?
The stormwater.
Is there a permit, though?
There, the stormwater permit, yes, they are. I don't think it hurts to have it in two places, though.
It's redundant.
Sometimes redundancy's needed in government.
Well, we have oversight of the stormwater plan as well, right?
You have oversight from a public health safety.
Right.
Welfare, they're the actual grants of the permit.
Right, right.
So all of the peer review materials have been given to the CONCOM in addition to yourself, and they're looking at the stormwater aspect in addition to the wetlands jurisdiction stuff. So they will be the ones that, that will set all the final conditions.
Right.
On it.
And then, I mean, I think the bike rack is a good condition, that doesn't sound like there's any problem with the applicant putting that in.
The bit about the trees moving to the sides, does that require?
That requires a waiver.
A waiver.
So we'll have to put that into either the findings?
And I would, I could do with some further discussion about that and where specifically the trees would go, 'cause like, maybe there could be more trees. If we can't put them in front, maybe they could be along the sidewalk, on the right-hand side there, to shade that sidewalk.
So there is a planting plan, Libby, so that is gonna show you the location of the trees. You have that already.
Right, no, I'm looking at, I'm looking at this and saying, maybe we could.
We could move some of those around?
And have another meeting.
And I would, I would like to see at least one tree along this, the street. It doesn't have to be in the middle necessarily, you know, of the entrance and exits, but to provide some shade for pedestrian traffic along that.
So if you go to sec, if you go to sheet eight, which is the landscape plan? CFGO8 dot zero. You'll see the location of the trees. You'll see the one on the edge, that's actually within the right-of-way.
Right.
Of MassDOT, so that's along the street. The other one is on the edge of the MassDOT right-of-way.
So our, our, the strict application of our bylaws would be that all six of those are supposed to be along the front lot line, right?
I think so.
So in this, I mean, in this layout, two of them are, but they go back instead of across.
And I see that this area here on the left of the sidewalk on the right-hand side of the property is designated for snow removal.
Yeah, snow storage there, right. Well, and I think Mr. Boyle's point about the salt may be another factor, at least if you're planting new trees.
There's certainly species that can handle.
Yeah.
Salt better than others.
Yeah.
I don't know specifics on the capability of the European hornbeam and the honey locust in terms of their.
Right.
But I can certainly find out.
Oh, yes.
I would suggest that DOT is gonna have some comments about visibility.
Yep.
So you should keep that in consideration when you're making these requirements.
And how, I mean, there, as far as I understand it, their approval is for sort of the entrance and exit onto Route Ten, right? And so, to the extent those trees are impacting visibility, is what they're gonna sort of take purview over that?
Exactly. If those trees become, in any way, block any of the.
Yeah.
Vantage points.
Well, I think.
They will have comments about.
And so Cumberland Farms won't seek formal approval of that plan until after they hopefully receive a special permit here, is that the way it generally is done?
Yeah, MassDOT won't.
They won't approve anything until there's a special permit, right? So I mean, I think already, whatever we approve for the entrance and exit is going to be qualified by, you know, the state DOT can trump us on that. And we'll sort of be at their mercy on that, as we have been in the past.
Yeah.
With the design, and also, I guess, if they have issues with where we wanna put trees that affect the visibility, so we'll just have to accept that.
I just, thank you.
That's a good point, thank you, Tom. And then the performance guarantee was another thing that I think, especially with the underground storage tanks, I think that that, that makes a lot of sense here.
I think the possibility maybe of merging with the other guarantees and putting it under the city engineer, is that something?
Well, so performance guarantees typically are for the construction of the stormwater system, you know, the utilities, that sort of thing. We typically are not gonna hold a performance guarantee on the decommissioning of underground tanks. So, so that's what the, that's what the number usually comes from. The last one that was done for a commercial project was for East Hampton Savings Bank, and I don't recall the number, I think it was either fifty or seventy-five thousand, but it was for the stormwater system primarily and the other utility and infrastructure. And once those are in place, then we release it. You know, I'm not, I'm not gonna sit and hold a guarantee for years on end. It's, it's to be held until the project is constructed, and then it's to be released. So the city engineer needs to get involved in terms of determining what that number is, and he's already, I've already given him a heads-up about that.
Okay.
And the Conservation Commission is already probably intending to do a performance guarantee under the stormwater permit. And so the question through the Conservation Commission, the planning board, is what, if anything, in addition to the, to the stormwater system, would you wanna put a performance guarantee on? So I think they're already thinking they're going to probably request one for the stormwater system. I mean, they haven't made a final determination on that, but that's, I think, where they're leaning at this point.
And when do they meet next?
The second and fourth Monday, so I think it's January sixth is their next meeting.
Okay. So they, they may or may not make that decision before we are back here?
Is that right? No, January sixth is a Friday, that can't be, can't be right. The ninth, upside-down sixth. So.
I don't wanna assume they're gonna do it and they don't, or something like that, right? But they're gonna make a decision on that, probably.
I would think, I mean, I think that the, the wetland impacts are fairly minimal, and they can make that, the decision for the notice of intent fairly easily. It's the stormwater permit that's more complex in this situation.
And so as far as the tanks go, we're sort of left with the fact that by statute, they have to remove them if they don't use them for two years, and we're kind of, that's just a natural risk of any project.
Yeah, when we had a pre-development meeting with the department heads and the applicant, prior to anything being submitted to any boards, the fire chief was at that meeting and was asked in regards to his concern about the tanks, and he said no, because there's so many regulations already in place that he didn't have any concerns.
Yeah.
And he didn't provide any comment that he had any concerns to the board when we did the interdepartmental review as required under the special permit process.
So, and assuming, so I guess board members, assuming the Conservation Commission deals with the performance guarantee on the stormwater plan, are there other parts of the project that we would be interested in a performance guarantee being in place? Realizing that we can change our minds, but I don't know.
I mean, there's the sewer line, there's the water connection.
Right.
So you don't have to make a decision on it.
Okay, yeah, I guess we can keep that in mind.
And I mean, and if you want, the board can request comment from the city engineer, or you've got Tom here as well, that could provide comment on whether, there's an opinion on whether there are other engineering items that need a guarantee.
Tom?
Not to put him on the spot, but.
No, I'll give you my opinion. I mean, I don't think it's unreasonable, what you're talking about, if you have a concern about stormwater elements, that's fine.
I mean, do you think there's other parts of the project where there's a risk and where there, there's a, sort of doing a cost-benefit analysis, it makes sense to? I mean, do you think there's other parts of the project where there's a risk and where there, there's a, sort of doing a cost-benefit analysis, it makes sense to have a performance guarantee? Or is the rest of it sort of tied into the project itself and that's what they're gonna be doing anyway?
I think that's what they would.
Yeah.
You know, they don't feel strongly that any of those elements that are part of the site that doesn't. This is a big organization, big company, but it's in their best interest, make sure it's all the way. Well, here at the end of the day, you have the, you're gonna have the perspective for auditing your work and how that compares to the site plan approval conditions.
Were there other conditions people were thinking of at this point, again, realizing that we have time at the next meeting too?
Just to throw you that, they don't have opinions on what the conditions should be or whether they should be there, but I think we should talk about the parking.
Mm-hmm.
That parking.
And the need for the extra.
Need for the extra parking, and I think we should talk about the noise from the pumps, the intercom system.
And the audio and the.
Yeah.
Mini TVs and.
Yeah.
That stuff, I agree, okay.
If I could just add one last thing.
Yep.
Engineer Murphy, you know, issued some comments regarding the sanitary sewer tie-in, and I had some, just one final kinda housekeeping issue regarding that tie-in.
Yeah.
It's obviously important to him, his comments were really good ones, I, I would surely wanna make sure that those were addressed, I attend.
Yeah, well, and we, those are the emails that you guys have received, right, and it, that sounds like that's all.
No issue.
Not a problem, okay. Good, thank you.
So, I guess the question to the board is the comments, and for the record, so that others know, 'cause not everybody had access to these emails. So, the first comment was that the manholes are typically required to be not more than three hundred feet apart, and that the applicant should confirm. Minimum cover of four feet above pipe is provided along entire length, and show any proposed grading where existing ground is less than four feet from the top of the proposed sewer pipe. So, does that therefore mean that there's gonna be a revision to the plans based on that comment? Or, I mean, a verbal, I'm just wanting to make sure.
I have no issue with reading that.
Okay. And then the second comment was that the permit proposed, hold on, I have to pull it up in my email, please hold.
Their proposed water connection work through the Mass DOT District Two.
Yeah.
They need to get that permit with a copy of the city, since it's under state jurisdiction, which it, that sounds like there's no issue with that either. You can have somebody here to talk about the pump and the audio and all that stuff.
Trash maintenance is concerned.
The trash, yeah, the trash cleanup and maintenance stuff for that.
They probably speak to delivery tanks, the pure as well as goods.
Yep, and the, and also, I mean, I'd be curious about the trash pickup, the actual dumpster work. I, it, it seems unnecessary and kinda cumbersome to have parking spots in front of the dumpster, even if you're gonna move it or not, but I guess if there's something lined up where they're gonna come after hours or whatever, that might make more sense, but I'd be curious to get some more information about that if you have it. And then, I, I don't know who our resources are just gonna talk more about these parking spaces, I mean, we're.
I mean, it's, the, the thing is, is it's a critical, I feel like the board almost needs to have a discussion or a decision, some preliminary decision about it tonight, because it impacts everything in this design. If you all of a sudden, next meeting, decide that you only want thirty spaces, they now have to go back and redo all of the calculations for the stormwater. So, you know, it, it impacts a tremendous amount, it, it's not, it's not glib.
Right.
So, I mean, I think that with the engineering peer review that we've had, that's looked at the impact, I know it's more impervious surface than we want at a site, but it looks like the system has been designed to maintain it in management. I trust Mr. Boyle's comment regarding his experience on the street, and his experience managing commercial properties, I think those are two valid points. But if you do wanna reduce or you're gonna request the applicant to do that, you need to understand that that impacts a lot, and so they, I, I feel like it's only fair to them to know that now, so that gives them the adequate time to do whatever they need to do.
Well, I think too, when we're just looking at the parking standards, at least one of the potentially applicable sections was up to thirty-one spots. And I think, I mean, you've got two there, I think, in front of the dumpster, that even if you get rid of those and they're not parking spots, it doesn't actually impact the actual surface area as far as the stormwater stuff. So, I mean, I, I'm not sure how many extra spots there really are on there as far as increasing or decreasing the parking lot size. And, and the impact that would have on anything, so, I mean, I think that, I mean, my impulse would also be to defer to the fact that the engineers have looked at it and the, you know, Cumberland Farms has experience with this, but I'm open to other people's thoughts on.
Yeah, I was trying to count to see if that whole right-hand lot is necessary, you know.
Oh, yeah, I think that's.
If, if there needs to be parking on the, whatever, I don't know what direction that is, is that the north side of the building? Whatever, along the side of the building, like, if we need that parking, then I think it makes sense to have that whole lot, but if we don't, if we could rely only on parking in the front, then.
Well, I think, yeah, so I think even at the most optimistic or the lowest number of spots, you would still need at least half of that lot.
Right.
And, and that's.
There's only fourteen spaces in front of the building.
Yeah.
So, that doesn't meet the parking requirements.
Right.
Right.
And that's why I was asking before about whether the.
Yeah, so I mean, there's, there's twenty spots in that backside lot, then, twenty-one maybe, to get to thirty-five, something like that, so it wouldn't really, I don't think, that's what I was saying, is I don't think there's a way to really get rid of the parking spaces where you also save pavement, which is really what we care about.
You could shrink it down so that it's flush with the back of the building potentially. So that it's.
But I, but that's where you get into, I mean, if, if it's treated as the service station, then I think they were up to thirty-one spots, and so then you're just, you could take the last two off up there.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not something that I'm.
Yeah.
Wedded to, I just thought we should explore it, since it is so close to the wetlands, like.
Yeah.
Because of the stormwater management issues.
I think it is an issue, but, but I think they've, with the stormwater, with the comments from David, I think it's well-managed in this personal case for me, I think it's good the way it is.
It does sound like the system that they've sort of ended up on is gonna adequately handle the stormwater, which is, of course, the concern with the parking spots, so that would be my impulse as well. Harry, thoughts?
No, I'm fine.
So, well.
Okay, so, to be clear, so the applicant, what we're looking for for the next meeting is somebody to talk, oh, we're talking, took that, the extra parking, so that's done. Okay, talking about the noise coming out of the.
Operating and operations.
Yeah.
Yep, talking about the trash and dumpster, and talking about delivery times and that sort of thing.
That's right, the upper call operations, yep.
Is that anything else that the board is looking for, for information from the applicant that has not, that I just did not read off?
I don't think so, anybody else?
Okay, so it's just, and do you think they could also just talk about, oh, never mind, forget it.
Go ahead.
No, never mind, never mind.
Sure?
Yeah.
All right.
Make it a cool bike rack.
I mean, I don't think there's a whole lot of lead time for this, it's two weeks, does that make, are we two weeks away, or are we about to be?
Yeah, I mean, I.
You just need to bring somebody here, it doesn't look like, I don't think you need to change any documents or.
Right.
Submit any new.
That'll be, I think, January third.
Motion to continue the special permit for two twenty-one North Hampton Street, Cumberland Farms, till January.
Third.
Third, thank you.
Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
May I pause, I have staying, all right.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, folks, a lot. And Tom, thank you a lot, it was, it was very helpful, I have a few set stuff to line through, thank you. All right.
I almost stood up and left. We're not done, are we?
No. Sit down.
All right.
Thank you, all right, take care.
I'm right with her.
Where's that, bread and butter?
Okay.
Okay, so, we still have work to do. Proposed zoning amendment? Jessica, do we have anything?
Well, no, we got Mindy here, and she's been sitting through everything, so why doesn't she come up?
Come on, Mindy, thank you for your patience.
She's very patient. Okay. Organized here for a sec.
Yeah.
Since we've gone through traffic and engineering, do we need to bring them both back on the, on the third?
I don't think so, right, I think we've, we've done everything with, yeah, I think we're okay with those.
So, it's operations and.
It's just operations at this point.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Everybody, we have still business, so if you can take it to the hallway, please. Or you can just ignore me, it's fine, I'm used to it at home, I'm used to it here, it's no different. Okay, uh, where are we at? Okay, so, I started working on a draft and I got halfway through it, and then I just, it just wasn't feeling, I wasn't feeling the love. It didn't, it wasn't sitting right with me because it was talking about campsites and trailers, and I don't think that's sort of the intent of what either the board may be looking for. Mindy's proposal is about cabins, it seemed like it was, in my mind, I started to picture more of like a seasonal vacation, kind of like that you find in a, in a, like a beach community or something like that, you know? So, and of course, this all hit me at like three-thirty this afternoon as I was working on it. So, so I very quickly just, I knew that the planner and Dennis had, had talked about it on the Mass Planner's listserv about zoning that he had put into place, so I went on his website and I very quickly pulled it off and started a quick look at it. And I think it's starting to make more sense in terms of the site components to it, that the part that's, that I'm finding now, I pulled Dennis and I pulled some place in California. And Palmer, interesting enough, has a seasonal cottage resort ordinance that is, looks like it's in a draft form. Now, I haven't had, spent a lot of time going through this yet, I just pulled it this afternoon, but I'm wondering if there's a way to sort of blend these two things together, 'cause I think a lot of what these talk about very quickly is more, it's almost like more of a subdivision, it's like, um, it's owner-occupied rent, you know, somebody buys a cottage within a development. It's not like a rental situation, is the one, is the sense I was getting from Palmer. But I feel like there could be design elements or just the, the purpose and the intent behind it is more in terms of that style. And Mindy, please correct me if I'm wrong in terms of, like, your vision, I don't think you're intending to have tent sites or campsite.
We don't want to, we, we were hoping to have about a dozen, one-bedroom, one-bath.
Codages.
Kitchen buildings, and we didn't wanna really do RVs or tent sites, partly is 'cause we like to keep the traffic down, I live there. And we'd like to keep the noise down, so we're talking about things coming out of gas pumps, we're trying to keep the noise down where we are, and I think if we allowed tents and, pre, primarily people that weren't in buildings, then there's gonna be a lot of noise traveling throughout where we are, which we really don't want, we want it to be quiet enjoyment for whoever's standing there.
And nothing's built as of now, right?
No.
Yeah.
And so, the.
It's too.
Well, and the other piece to think about it, it's not just about this specific property, that, that we're crafting something that is to be thought about by the community as a whole. So, the flip side is, okay, do we, would, if, if this site didn't work, are there other sites in the community where somebody wanted to put up tent sites or campsites, is that something we want in East Hampton? And I'm not sure if, if it makes sense. Oh, and there's things, like, the size, the acreage requirements for the, for the sample ordinances that I pulled, they're like thirty acres, forty acres, twenty acres is the minimum lot size. These seasonal cottage ones are more on five acres, which is what Mindy has, is a five-acre site. We don't have forty-acre sites in East Hampton, it doesn't exist. And these are for communities that are very rural, that people are going to, getting out of the city and out of suburban communities to go have a rural experience. That's not what I think we are as a community in terms of, it, it just doesn't make sense, it doesn't jive to me. Now, and then if you disagree, I'll continue on the other path, I just, it, it was starting to feel not right in terms of what Mindy's looking for, in terms of her site, and then what we would want as a community at large for camping facilities.
And so, part of it too is, it's really, I mean, part of it is regulating the construction of something like this, and then also the use and operation of it.
Right, and then.
So, it's like two different components, and it's not like Cumberland Farms where we know it's gonna get run the same way, it's a convenience store, and we've seen a million of them, I, I mean, I've been to campgrounds and they're all very different, and so you're gonna have to have some sort of standards.
So, a lot of these are dealing with, like, sanitation facilities, bathrooms, the distance between campsite to campsite.
Open fires, alcohol, hours.
Fires, you know, how wide the campsite is, you know, it's all, it, it's, the budding neighbors, like, the driveway has to be a hundred feet in from the boundary, but that's not gonna make sense.
Right.
For a five-acre site, you know, so the, it just seemed like the standards were just not.
Jiving.
They just weren't jiving, it's the only way I can explain it, and it didn't make sense. So, you know, I'd like to maybe explore this seasonal cottage model and see if I can find more examples, and see if there's a way that I can take this, but then flip it so that it is rental, it doesn't have a homeowners' association, like, it's, you know, that's, that's the stuff that started to make me panic a little bit about the seasonal stuff, it's homeowners' associations. It's, it's really people who own a cottage or a cabin within a larger development, and they all come there for the summer and hang out. And that's not exactly it either, so, it's kind of like a combination of the two, it's a hybrid of some sort.
Do you have a comment?
Couple of things.
Yeah.
So, one is a question, the current ordinance that allows for.
Campgrounds.
Commercial campgrounds, that allows for tent sites?
We don't have any standards that say anything about.
Details at all.
Nothing.
Campgrounds are allowed, but we don't know what that means.
If you're a nonprofit, you can do what you want on a, on a campground.
Yeah, I mean, that's the other thing, so.
Which maybe we should fix that, too.
Yes, probably. Second is a quick comment, I think Hanover, New Hampshire also has a similar thing, I don't know if you need more examples?
Yes, I mean, I just, again, I just spent a half hour just quickly Googling, trying to be like, you know, what.
I can't remember what it's called, I think it's called Goose Pond or something, that they have some cabins around, and they have their own special zoning district for it, so it may be not a good example, but worth looking at.
Okay, thank you.
But some of it's almost like a hotel.
Yeah.
It is.
In some ways, it's like a hotel with just freestanding rooms, but there's also the outdoor component, which makes it a little different as far as the use, but.
And then, the, the third thing, and I might be the odd person out here, and that's fine, I'm used to it. But, you know, I'm trying to think creatively about the future of East Hampton, and I'm thinking about some of our vulnerable working lands in the Park Hill area, on East Street, and thinking, if it's a choice between a commercial campground and some other kind of more onerous development, you know, we might not want to close that off as an option for the future. Just because, yeah, I mean, there's definitely some downsides to campgrounds, but less downsides maybe than heavy development in some of those currently rural parts of town. And, you know, maybe they need to be heavily regulated, maybe we don't need to worry about that right now, 'cause nobody's proposed it, but maybe we don't want an outright prohibition at this stage, just a thought.
Yeah.
So, that's sort of where I'm at, I kind of just felt like I was going down the wrong path, looking at the samples I had, and it just didn't feel right, so I wanna explore this other possibility, and I know that I'm delaying you and I'm. Okay, all right.
You used a little blend in the beginning, and I think.
And I think once the Cumberland Farms project is, is off, I mean, it's been taking an incredible amount of time, so once that's.
We're actually appreciative that you're thinking about it and looking about it, and we're not just in this nonprofit track, which was, to me.
Right.
I couldn't understand it, so, I can certainly help try and do some research, but I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
I think what makes it unique is that we're on city sewer and water, so when you look at like the campground model, there's, when I was talking to Jackie Duda at the health department, she, for a long time was talking to me about septic systems and stuff, and kept saying, no, that's not.
Right.
What we want, we don't really wanna disrupt that much.
So, realizing that we're looking for the whole city and not just for your project, but does this sound more like the kind of thing that you're imagining? I mean, it, it, it's kinda hard, like, to pinhole, like, sort of philosophically where this fits, because it is kinda like a campground, or a homeowners' association, or a hotel, or any number of things.
Well, the fact of the matter is, we don't have any place that somebody could rent a room, except for all of the illegal Airbnbs that are in the city.
They don't exist.
They don't, which, yeah, la, la, la. So, uh, you know, I think.
So, I think it makes sense to be careful about it, but I think you're right, that it's, it's something a little different than just a campground.
Yeah, it just, you know, the, looking at the standards for campgrounds in terms of the acreage, and just all of the dimensional requirements, and the open space requirements, and they clearly are just written for more, and septic, I mean, there's, most of the regulations are revolving around septic systems, well, that's not the, there's hardly any place in town that requires septic anymore.
Right.
Doesn't make sense, so...
Okay.
Okay.
So, maybe next meeting, or at least after we're done with Cumberland Farms, maybe the meeting after that, or...
This is done. Um, yes, yes.
We have some other stuff going on in our personal lives in the next two weeks, too.
Well, and we also, you know, the sign ordinance kind of got dropped, too, and that needs to get revived.
Yeah.
And I'd like to see some bigger zoning changes happening here, soon, so...
Okay. All right, so, we'll wait to see more, and thank you for your patience.
Oh, no, thank you for...
Yeah, I'm sorry it's taking longer than...
We're in the long haul, you know, so, it's a multi-year project.
Right, thank you.
All right, thanks, Mindy.
Thank you.
All right, how about recreational marijuana?
All right, so... So, this is all very interesting and moving very fast, and this is, this is something we are going to have to really start thinking about and focusing on, so, I went to a workshop that was held in Worcester last week, it was put on by the Central Mass Regional Planning Agency, they, it's mostly planners in the room, but there was definitely some school officials, some public safety folks, and there's just a lot of inconsistencies in the law, so, know that City Council has already brought this up, and that I think it's been sent to the Ordinance Subcommittee, so they're already starting to look at it, so hopefully we can have some good dialogue and conversation back and forth around this topic. You know that we have a medical marijuana ordinance already in place. The biggest question and concern right now is in regards to timelines, so, the way that it's set up right now under the, under the petition, and I, what I can do is, I can send you a link to Central Mass Regional Planning Agencies, they've got a whole page where they have all of the documents relative to medical marijuana right now, not medical, sorry, recreational marijuana, all housed in one location, so you can go in and you can read this. One of them is the law itself, and specifically when it comes to local control, where we've got some questions is in regards to timelines, like I said. So, the state, basically, the effective date was last Thursday, coincidentally, the same day as the workshop, they have until September to have the Cannabis Control Commission, once that commission is established by the state, which it hasn't been established yet, they haven't even developed this department, they haven't hired the staff, they haven't got the software in place that they need to do, there's a lot of stuff that the state needs to do now, and I don't think they know where the money's coming from to put this commission in place, because it's not something that they've budgeted for. So, they have until September to get the quote-unquote initial regulations in place. They're gonna start offering licenses October first, so, we have one month to develop regulations and have them in place between the, between when the state will put out their official set of regulations, and how they're going to regulate everything from security to whatever, that's all listed in this petition that was passed, to when communities need to have something in place, because that's when people are gonna start coming for permits. One month is not a hell of a lot of time, and we're, I mean, we're fortunate that we're a city, and we have a council process that's faster, for communities that have town meeting, they don't know what to do right now, because a lot of communities only have a town meeting in the spring, they don't have one in the fall, and so, they're trying, they're scrambling, trying to figure out, well, how are we gonna make this all work, and how are we gonna get these regs in place with the timeline currently set by the state, so...
There's a lot of push for delays, too.
There's a lot of push for delays.
At the state level, so, that's probably optimistic.
A lot of communities are looking at trying to put moratoriums in place, which might be a good strategy for us to do, to put a moratorium in place until the regs come out from the state, and we have an opportunity to look at them, but a moratorium is only good for a temporary period of time, so we would need to figure out what that deadline is, or what that timeline is that we would give ourselves to get regs in place.
I'd like to see us move as swiftly as possible, there's advantage to, to being amongst the first, financial advantage.
Well, right, so, it cuts, cuts both ways, right, you don't want to be caught off-guard where you don't have safeguards in place, but you also don't, I mean, I think people who tried to delay the medical marijuana, you know, I think some of them lost out.
Well, and some of them now are in trouble because they have medical marijuana ordinance that's already in place. The law states, right off the bat, that no municipality can prohibit placing a marijuana establishment which cultivates, manufactures, or sells marijuana, or marijuana products, quote-unquote, "in an area in which a medical marijuana treatment center is registered." So, we already have an ordinance that allows it in the Mill Industrial District, we have a facility that has been granted a permit and is through the state process in the Keystone Building. The question is, what does "in any area" mean? Does that mean the zoning district, does that mean the building? There is no definition, and there is nothing that is providing guidance to anybody on what "in that area" means, so that's one issue already in place. But, that being said, we have a facility that's going in place, the way that the law is currently written, is they could be, also become, in addition to medical, be recreational marijuana facility, so, your concern about losing out, you know, is less for us, because there's a facility already happening in East Hampton. If the city, or if, if there's enough population that wants to try to prohibit them completely, it has to go to a, it has to go to a referendum vote of, of the voters, and so, there's, you can prohibit the operation of more than one, you can limit the number to be fewer than twenty percent of the number of alcohol licenses, you can limit the, the number of any type to fewer than the number of medical marijuana treatment centers, so, but that has to go to the vote of the voters, that cannot be decided by the planning board, it cannot be decided by City Council, it goes to a vote, so, so I think that's sort of an interesting...
But those are all limitations, right, it's not a prohibition?
Um, yes, if you want to prohibit.
You can outright prohibit?
You can.
A facility?
Yes, so, there's, signed by not fewer than ten percent of the number of voters, they would have to put a question, and this is for the consumption, so, this is for onsite consumption, so the municipality can also prohibit onsite consumption, so the other thing to all of this, in addition to just being able to walk into a store and buy it, is cafes, bars, if a restaurant wants to serve a dessert that is an edible, how does that work? You know, I mean, there's a whole host of things that are now, like, questions that nobody has the answer to, that we need to think about and regulate at the local level. Should there be a local license, like there is for liquor licenses, should there be one for marijuana facilities as well? So, I just think, I'll send you the link, and I think it would be, hoove you to spend some time reading through some of these materials, the best summary is the PowerPoint presentation that the staff put on at the workshop, that kind of summarizes all the inconsistencies, all the questions, what needs clarification.
I'd love to see that.
And, and timelines, I mean, it's really, it's a lot, it's meaty, it's a lot of information, it's like thirty-five slides.
Can you put that in our Dropbox?
Yes, I can put it in the Dropbox, and I, I just think it's, we're gonna need to start really figuring this stuff out, but it's gonna take, you know, we're kind of at the state's mercy to some extent, too, and by only having a month to kind of figure it out, it's gonna be interesting.
But it doesn't, I mean, a lot of these are issues we know are gonna be issues regardless of what the reg says, so we can spend the next nine months at least thinking about it and talking about big-picture things, and then when we see the final regs...
Right.
Which may or may not be in September, we can have a little bit of a head start.
So, to, so to that point, so, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, the land use staff put out an email to those municipalities that they knew attended the workshop last week, and has asked whether we would want to request techni, free technical assistance from them, and what we did with the medical marijuana, I don't know who was on the board at the time when we did it, but we had like a working group, where we had a bunch of communities, we would meet with PVPC staff, we would work through the regs, we'd come up with the zoning, and then we had a model that we all sort of took back to our communities and tweaked very minorly, but we had a model that we all sort of hashed out together, and so, there's a proposal to do that as well for recreational marijuana, and so, talking with, talking with the mayor, and with one of the council members on the Ordinance Subcommittee, you know, the idea is to, so I, I've put out the request to PVPC that if there are other communities that want to, to go through that same process, East Hampton would be happy and be willing to participate, so, hopefully, we won't have to do it on our own, that's the whole point, and hopefully, they can even give us moratorium language that we could use as a model as well, if we wanted to go that route, until we can sort of figure out where the state's at. I'll, I'll tell you right now, we're already having accessory uses that are approaching the planning department anyway, in terms of opening up, like a smoke shop.
Yeah.
And that will be coming soon as well, before you can even purchase.
Right, because that's, you can do that now.
Right. So, anyway, it's gonna be interesting.
Interesting times.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you, Jessica.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, that's it, but we did have somebody here who was interested in the medical marijuana stuff, or, I mean, the recreational marijuana.
Thank you, that was helpful, I guess I, I haven't come, my biggest concern was just what should community members be thinking about in terms of if they're thinking about potentially opening up a retail space for recreational marijuana, the, the types of things that you'd be looking for in an application, just in the future, what, what could community members expect, obviously, you need time to plan and research, but is there any participation available in the planning, and the researching, and the development of whatever ordinances you're all thinking of putting together?
It'll all take place at these public hearings, I mean, it's all open, and we, often, it ends up just being us and trying to make some sort of a decision, so the more public input we can get, the better.
Yeah, I mean, I was in a class in law school where a fellow student of mine put together a planning and zoning paper on recreational marijuana use, and so, I'm curious to read his paper, because I come, did a lot of research into zoning and planning, and ordinances, so, I, I, I will be reading his paper, and maybe I can present it to you.
Great.
Recommendations?
Sounds good, look forward to reading it.
Yeah, and maybe pulling just other, the ordinances that, like, Colorado and Washington have already been using in their cities and towns, just to see, I know, like, what you were saying, cafes, and, those are prohibited in Colorado, so, if, you know, whether or not other states have allowed it, have also permitted or prohibited those types of things, and if they've constructed any ordinances relating to smoke shops, or, or also social cafe-type things.
Well, and assuming it ends up like the medical marijuana regulations, I mean, the state is gonna have a lot of oversight that, I mean, we have, I mean, half the stuff we did with the medical marijuana stuff was just checking off a box that the state, you know, has already checked off anyways.
Right.
And I would assume they're gonna have the same sort of oversight, where there'll be...
They will.
Gray area around the edges where we can sort of control, but I think the big picture is gonna be more uniform, where we allow it, and that kind of thing will be up to us.
And I think in terms of consumption onsite, the bill itself even has a timeline for that, I think it says it can't happen within a year, so, at first, you can sell it, and then within a year later, consumption can be permitted or prohibited, depending on the ordinance, so, even that is obviously regulated, stable.
And it's all still being...
But something for us all to be...
Thinking about.
Thinking about and aware of, so, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else, anybody?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?[1696.74]